Let's get started.
Um inclusive ship here. Uh if you want to participate in any uh specific discussion, we'll ask you to raise your hand via zoom. Or or on the phone, but it looks like everyone here is on zoom. So. Uh there's a function at the bottom of the screen for raising hand. If you wanted to contribute at any time, do that. We'll make sure to monitor it. Uh we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Um if they extend beyond three minutes, the chair has the uh authority to. Cut you off, gavel you down.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. Okay, we're at public comment period. Mary? So you're here, you often times.
I had a thought and it went past me like nobody's business, but that's okay. I I do have a comment of um. One of the things, and as you know, I'm involved in our community, Mary Rappar Stevenson and um. People, I was talking to me about stuff. And I told them I was coming to this meeting tonight because Anna's station was on the uh uh thing and one of uh uh. The persons that was I was speaking with said, you know, we need to take care of the things we have and not go looking for more trouble. And um and we we do, you know, uh people are. Uh we live in now in a community where we have the highest P U D rates, we have high water rates. Um uh people are stressed. Uh they don't need to. Be thinking about our city having more to take care of uh on their plates. And uh speaking of taking care of, uh I think you all know my thoughts about snow plowing. I've mentioned it every winter. And there are good ways of doing snow plowing and bad ways of doing snow plowing, and we are not doing it the good way. Uh I don't know how many times I went out there to remove berms and it gets harder and harder as you get older and older and we do have a geriatric. Community here. So I did write my letter to Leona and the city council. I'm not sure I included you guys on it. But you know, I suggested maybe we could buy a sidewalk cleaner. A little tractor. I'm going to pay something a month for it. And perhaps our snowplowers need to learn not to go thirty miles an hour while they're snowplowing. Uh and snow removal needs to be an option. Um uh taking care of the city doesn't mean just taking care of the infrastructure, it means taking care of the people that live. There and why not try to, yes, we'll try to get our sidewalks clean, but you can't come over there and. Thirty miles an hour and this stuff is spewing ten to twenty feet. Uh he, the only reason it didn't spew on me was because I was looking at him and I had a shovel in my hand. And uh it's just to, you know, there are ways of doing it. Uh I've lived in Michigan and other areas with lots of snow. And yeah, you don't have to make a clean driveway, but you can plow past the driveway. You don't have to burn somebody in. Uh people used to know how to do that here, but uh the knowledge base has retired or died or moved on. So I I think we can do better for the citizens of our community by taking care of them. And snow removal is the biggie. We're still in La Nina. We're not out of this. Winter hasn't even started yet, so it's not going to be easy. So figure out some dump sites and start. Taking it away. Putting berms at the intersection should not be an option. How many berms have, do you still see at the intersections? They're still there because they're covered with dirt and they're not going to melt for a while unless they're removed. That's it. Thank you.
Well, I have to agree with you, Mary. I've noticed it as I've gotten older, not quite sure what it is. But each shovel full of snow feels heavier now than it did a few years ago. It could be aging, it could be climate change, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, which ones are mine going on?
Well, the first four inches were water. You could, when you, when I was shoveling it, there was this much water at the bottom. Then the second uh snow we had, the eight or nine inches was uh much lighter, but. You know, once it started melting, it got, it was heavier. Yeah, no, it 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 can be done. It's just a learning uh process and uh. Uh we can find some YouTube's.
Yeah, I've I've noticed in in our neighborhood, we have to get out and, you know, we've got all the community mailboxes in one places and. We have to shovel eight to ten feet of snow away from those mailboxes. I think a plot probably could get closer. Except for people to get out. Oh.
Hello, hello.
Hi, Mike.
How are you guys doing? Can you hear me here?
Yes.
I don't know if you can see me or not. Let's see if we can do this uh quick. Well, yes, uh Mike Beck. A I C P certified planner. You may know me as the Skamania County Community Development Director, but I am also a Stevenson city resident. And my comments here tonight in this general public comment period are my views as a city resident. Not in my role as an official planning director. I too share concerns about snow access, walkability. Accessibility. We do have an aging population in this county. And even if we don't, even if you're able bodied, jumping over snowbanks in the downtown core on a sidewalk. Three days after a snowstorm is really something that would be an easily addressed throughout any snow emergency. Going into the future. Now, Mary has lived in Michigan, in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, as have I. And have shoveled an awful lot of snow. It would be unrealistic to expect that the city snowplowers could clear every sidewalk. And do it and clear every roadway in the city of Stevenson and no city in the Midwest has a policy that I'm aware of. That would clear every sidewalk in a city and throw snow. So that it doesn't land in people's driveways. You, when you are addressing. Snowfalls, as Mary should be familiar, having seen cities with twenty plus feet of snow in a winter. Uh there is a realistic approach to snow clearing and yes, property owners with driveways do need to deal with snow in their driveway. Uh I would like to see a better approach by property owners downtown, perhaps with a uh push from the city, either ordinal or. Persuasive. That the snow does need to be cleared downtown because we have people in wheelchairs and people that walk. I saw our, one of our fabulous senior citizens fall on Russell Street. Because the sidewalks were not cleared and she slipped and fell in the middle of the road. Not a good look. And we can do our citizens better. Um how much does a property owner with a parking lot downtown pay to have his snow cleared? There's money to clear snow in Stevenson. Um we don't need a snow blower. We need the property owners who. In many other cities have the responsibility to clear snow within a reasonable time after a snow event. To recognize that they too are part of the city of Stevenson. And they have a responsibility to provide the safe walkways in front of their businesses after a snow event. If the city would like to take that on, it's fun to shovel snow, it's fun to run snowplows, you might want to invest in capital improvements, but really. It, many other cities in Michigan and the Midwest use a property owner driven, responsible snow clearing policy. Anyway, that's my comments about snow as your residential guy who likes to live in the city of Stevenson. And back to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And in northern Michigan, they don't do the sidewalks because you have ten feet of snow on them. As you know, Mike.
That's right. They don't clear the snow, they don't clear, they don't clear the sidewalks and you get big berms in your driveway.
Those are both comments I mean, thank you. Um I just wanted to just ask a question, which I don't know the answer to this and that is. In some places, it is the requirement that the property owner.
Absolutely. Many municipalities have an actual ordinance. I believe maybe Hood River does, if you could look closely for that.
Is that true here? I don't know. I mean, whether it's enforced or not, or whether people understand it or not is another set of questions, but is that on the books? I don't even know.
I think there's a statewide, a state statute that assigns responsibility for that to the property owner. Uh enforcement or any local tool has never been a black.
Right, right.
And so it mostly comes down to if there's trip and fall.
Basically, state right away management rules say you're responsible for the sidewalk. Yeah. I mean, I I think these are helpful. I mean, these are good comments. I'm not taking issue with either of your comments. I think one of the problems, and it's just a, it's just a uh a barrier to effectiveness on this case is it. It doesn't snow as much or as often as it does in places where property owners are used to that. I mean, having visited Boston in winter. Every, you know, every store owner was out shuttling the the sidewalk in front of their store because one, it was required. Two, they knew that and three, it happens every other week, you know, so it's, I'm not saying that's an excuse for. Yeah, us not doing better. I'm just saying that's a, another barrier to where we're coming. What's the law? The people know what the law is.
Doesn't help if you clean your sidewalk and then the snowplow comes along and and does that again. And it's not like once or twice, it's three or four times. And uh so a. Good policy might be something that should be discussed. I mean, we have the rule about blackberry bushes on your sidewalk and. Uh you can have a lean put against your property if you don't cut back your obstruction so people. But how many sidewalks do we really have in Stevenson? Not that many.
I don't know.
Uh but there are many like the one by Gary's up here. That's a hellaciously long. He's not gonna do the whole. Thing's block. Uh so uh maybe let's think of something else and if people are willing to donate. My, or I mean, an actual tax or whatever, uh snowplow tax, let's think about it. Congratulations, Mike, on being the new director.
So. What do you all want to do with this conversation? Do you want to send, well, I guess I'm encouraging you to uh have draft up some letter to city council for them to consider. And the reason why I say that is they've started to really embrace that strategic plan idea. We've got limited staff time. Resources to get things done and we want to do things well. And so um in the strategic plan, there certainly wasn't anything about this. Strategic plans are typically done in the summertime too, so that when budget season comes, we can.
Well, yeah, but I think in recent years too, we haven't had anywhere near the snowfall that we used to. Um I can remember it was uncommon to have snow in this community at Thanksgiving. Now, but it hasn't been that way in the last fifteen, almost twenty years. It is, yeah, it certainly is. Uh and it is a hardship for folks, yeah. I grew up in Spokane. I can remember shoveling an awful lot of snow and. Driveway berms and chipping ice and, yeah, yeah, it's, it's tough. I was a kid. At that point in time, and I never enjoyed it then. I think I'd enjoy it a lot less now and a lot of people just aren't capable. I would like to see city central business district. I'd like to see those folks be responsible. City council, now we're hearing this concern. Uh certainly walking around uh after the snowstorm, particularly downtown, I was like. You know, shouldn't have left the pile there. Um so I think it's, you know, there, there is an opportunity to do better here and I think the fact that we're here in this. About to be, they ought to know. I don't know, man, what the best way to do that, whether it's a, it's a letter or a memo to city council, I think we should know that. That concern has been voiced here and I think we share that concern. Not that we have a magic answer.
And the letter I sent, I sent it to to uh consul or Steve Ed. And I don't, and David said he didn't get his. So I, uh you know, I don't send it to individuals and that, so I hope they all got it.
And I will draft something for review at the uh. Unless you want me to draft in seven.
You know, I don't, I don't know that we need to review it. I think you you pretty much heard with those concerns, I think it'd be straightforward, Ben. And getting into the city council for the next snowstorm.
And next year, we won't have La Nina, we'll have El Nino, so we don't have to worry about.
Maybe. Okay, so at this point, I think we're ready to approve some minutes. We have minutes from October tenth. November. Fourteenth. Let's take the October tenth minutes first. Well, I was here for that meeting, so I can approve, I can move a few. A motion and a second through the discussion. All those say aye, in favor, say aye. If those say nay, motion carries. Okay, let's go to. November fourteenth.
I review those and I would uh motion.
Read the minutes, I wasn't here, but since you moved through a while, second. Okay, then motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
If those say nay. Alright. Now we're down to. Annexation policy kickoff.
Okay, let me finalize my brain, bring it up on this. So um draft, I recommend there's a sufficient letter to city council saying like. You want them to prioritize development of the snowplow policy. Concerns we've heard about are the increasing need or um the climate change influence. Um the public plowing practices are have been addressed as a concern. And then bringing in owner responsibility and partnership with um property owners to get this done, so.
Yeah, I think with an emphasis of them, certainly in the business district.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be a good issue for them to raise with the S T A as well. They're doing a good job overall and I can, so S T A is, so. This is something that they probably have noticed it, that it wouldn't hurt for them to hear that we've been hearing about it. Okay. Mary.
That reminded me, um tomorrow is the gorge commission meeting and uh it's actually in person. At the Best Western, if you want to attend or by Zoom, but uh that was the, that was my public comment that went through my brain. Um they're going to discuss the climate action plan and uh I wonder if our city. Uh a lot of municipalities are already talking about climate change. Ben just mentioned that, that's what kicked it in my brain. Um so I don't know what's, what the city's involvement is in the climate action plan that the gorge commission is. Working on with the vital indicators uh to, um Lisa Naskook is the head planner for that. But I would seriously uh recommend that the city become part of that planning. Even though we're on under gorge commission jurisdiction, we're in this region. And uh there are things that are going to be happening with climate change that will affect all of us. So uh their climate action plan is now aspirational, but it is meant to become a policy. Uh driven uh plan in the, in the next four or five years. So I don't know. Where your planning commission is on climate change. Thank you.
I don't think we've had a discussion on any formal climate related policies. Mary, I don't know whether city council.
Real conversations that I've had were policies that have been discussed, greenhouse gas policy.
Yeah, I uh I've made my comments to gorge commission, other people did too. And uh I'm I'm urging them to get partners, any partners as they can in the communities because it's not just. The gorge, it's a regional issue. Portland, Vancouver need to be involved too because they affect us. Especially with emissions. Uh so uh I'm putting it out there that we need to start thinking about it. And the county too. Mike.
Yeah, I. Again, I don't, I don't think, Mary, that we've, we've had that conversation here. I know we've had some of those conversations and we've talked in this area about. Water resources and how we address water resources is uh. In the face of climate change, but I don't know that we've looked at it in terms of city services or. It's what the city can do, I think, to address climate change or to moderate the impacts. Of climate change, which is probably.
Well, you know, on a, in the city level, probably purchasing. Uh vehicles that emit less rather than more. Uh those, but those are things, you know, practical things that you can do. And then there's the other hard stuff that's coming down the road. And water issues are going to be a biggie. We already have that up on Kanaka. And other areas where they don't have water in for in August. And uh and September and October sometimes too, depending on the, how much water uh comes down and rain. So uh. Climate change is here. Uh I think our city is going to be impacted by changes. Climate change, so what can we do to lessen the impact on our citizens?
Those thoughts? So how do we typically interface with what the gorge commission is working on? They're working on this, I saw some of the accounts about the climate change policy they're working on. Does this city. Way in occasionally on those issues?
When there's a direct impact to the city with how some delivery nation play out. So, for example, they recently did their urban area. Boundary expansion policy, we were involved in. Defining the urban areas, we were involved in that. And then um participate in discussions about what is the economic development. Since urban areas are where economic energy is intended to occur under that, so um there's not a uh. Coherent policy uh to address what you're saying, but we occasionally give it.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially when we know that there's a direct impact.
In two thousand and seven, they got involved because of D E Q and uh our uh Department of Ecology and Clean Air. And haze in the, in the gorge and Marion Nicole participated in those talks. But yeah, the city has not had a presence. Uh and I I think now might be a good time to start.
I guess what I would say, Ben, if you, you've probably been tracking what the gorge commission is working on here, if you see. Issues in in that draft policy of theirs that would really have a noticeable impact on us at the city level, it'd be good to. Let's know, something we can get on the agenda, Jeff, if we see fit to do that, but I mean, I think it's your professional judgment that. Sort of balls strikes, if this one matters, this one not so much, but you know, climate change policy could, like urban boundaries have. You know, some significant impact on us. And I have been monitoring this one uh at all.
Worth it to answer the question.
Well, I I can send you the cap if you guys want it and the link to it, then you can, it's only a hundred pages. And and as I said, it's aspirational at this point, but that's what they wanted. And then the, the policy will be much tougher.
It might be worthwhile too when we're looking at. The decisions that we deal with, whether it's a comprehensive plan or zoning or a development proposal. Just to have a general discussion is, are there any climate related issues that we should be considering? You know, it just is a direct question, direct area of inquiry, I think. Ask ourselves that question. And it may manifest itself in a variety of different ways in terms of. Water supply certainly is one that I can think of.
Yeah, stormwater, stormwater, stormwater and water supply, seem like the big ones. Why do you get the flyer? If it's something we start to discuss each time, we'll get more kind of tuned in on those aspects that. That make a difference. By the time it comes around to actually having to make some type of decision or policy, we'll have. Something to back it up with that we've worked with already.
You don't want other people making, you're just making decisions for you. And that's why I'm stressing involvement now. Uh because at some point it's going to become policy nationwide, policies and some of them people won't like. Because they're limited.
A state mandate that uh precedes anything that you would want to do locally and.
Yeah, that's why you want to make your voice heard.
Yes. I can easily build that into staff reports for policy development. And I will try to build it into um. Plus our judicial staff reports under the categories for um. To with the neighborhood, probably. Make a decision within that context. Harmony with the neighborhood.
With Lisa Naskook, like say, is the lead planner on that and she has presented to the commissioners uh on, on that. So, you know, she could easily do a Zoom thing for you guys to go over the cap with you. Uh she's, she's really a, a good planner and she uh she was the collaboratives. So facilitator for a number of years, did a great job and she's doing a really good job on the vital indicator signs. Project. Which we worked on in two thousand and seven for eighteen months and it was a bloodletting, but we got it done.
Well, it'd probably be worthwhile to, to take a look at, at that. Climate action plan the gorge commission has and said, is there anything in there that, you know, that we should be thinking about as we make decisions? Uh again, realizing it's more their, their policy decision, that we are an entity within the gorge. And it would be nice to make sure that if there's something relevant to our actions.
Yeah, the tribes are doing their own. Already, Yakima and uh Miss Verse.
So we, we're going to our annexation policy kickoff and we had a great conversation at the last meeting, but you know. And when I look through the package here and I look through it, you know, it was summarized back in nineteen seventy-eight, I thought. Well, there's some pretty good work that was. I thought, gosh, you could, you could fine tune this, but it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good body of work. Um in terms of the, of the why and the how, I think. I was, I was, I was pretty impressed. Yeah, I found nothing to disagree with. Barrel over dock and like, yep, yes, yes, yes.
Unfortunately, they did it both times, so they found cause to disagree. Move that forward for us to, to utilize. So um you all did have a great conversation about it. Uh sorry that I wasn't here and um.
Was that recorded?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for leaving a good meeting on that one. Tried to capture your discussion and those key concerns. Um that's how I, I heard that was in page twelve of the packet. And just want to set this um policy um development going forward within the context of your plan, commission bylaws. Those are attached here as they relate to uh conscientious public involvement, so that you guys are making decisions on. How to involve the follower who is responsible for doing that. I've got a staff recommendation here to um. Well. As far as timeline, so let's try to get this done by mid-year of next year and start going back from there and to lead this uh through a subcommittee. Uh finding commissioners so that we can be doing some work mid-month between meetings, but still having some staff. Commissioner interaction.
Well, if, if Mike is still with us, you know, I look at this as a, as a city-county undertaking. You know, I mean, we can, we can plan for, for annexations on the city's behalf, but uh in order for that to be successful. The county needs to be engaged, so. In order for that to be successful, the county needs to be engaged. And so, Mike, with your new scope. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But what thoughts do you have for us in terms of how we can work with the county uh in addressing a good. Annexation policy and strategy?
Thank you, Commissioner Breckel. I, I don't know that I am prepared to answer that tonight. I did intend just to, I'm, I'm tuning in as a, as a city resident. But since you have me on the spot as the county planner, the county planning director, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, we at the county, we certainly see this as being. A fully cooperative process. We want to see mutual gains with the best results for everybody involved. Property owners, our utility providers, our underground teams. Our city residents, our current county residents and vice versa. Working with capital improvements that the city has scheduled, and we will do whatever is needed to effectuate. The best policy to deliver the best solutions all around. I do not know what those are. I cannot speak to those tonight. I did not come into the meeting prepared with notes. I'm here primarily to listen because it is a kickoff and just to even tacitly. Even though I'm not here in my official capacity, yes, we're here to cooperate and work with the county. I don't not know what direction. I will be given by my board of county commissioners, but I will do what I can to smooth the process out. So, carry on. Good luck and good luck.
Well, that's good. I mean, I.
Give me an email later.
I appreciate hearing that. I mean, we talked about this a lot about how, you know, it really does need to be a collaborative process between the city and the county. And thank you, Mike, for indicating that's your, your open goal as well. And I think actually when you get to the question, public involvement, I mean, one thing that would really frustrate the public was. Would be if we weren't doing that, right? So, you know, sort of job one is make sure that these two governments are working together on this question. And then, then you can, we can hear from the public who are constituents in some cases. Well, in every case, if they're a city resident, they're a constituent of the town, of the county as well.
Yeah.
So they're going to expect, you know, they're going to expect that kind of collaboration. We're going to do a better job with it. So, you know, that's important.
But yeah, and I, I think it's also just, it's critically important to those folks out there because it's going to be confusing if, if, if the two aren't working together. You know, are, are we on the same page? You know, are we trying to coordinate those efforts? Are we trying? I think is, is Mike brings, makes the point, bringing the other parties, the utility providers into the. Into the conversation as well as the citizens within the city and. Those, you know, in the, in the county in terms of what their desires.
As we talked about in, in, with respect to that case too, that what services you can and cannot access. With or without annexation is really where the, where the crux of the issue is.
Right, and, and, and how the cost of those.
Right.
Improvements, that infrastructure uh is done.
Well, I think one of the primary things that uh here would be is, is the. Scamania County Planning Commission planning on taking this up just like you guys are. And, and do they think that it's just as urgent? Because if I remember correctly, the, the talk about annexation like months and months ago. Uh, one of the primary questions was, do your citizens really want it?
Do you really want for?
The citizens of this community, because I can tell you from what I'm hearing, no is. The main answer to that. So, uh, why are you doing this? What outcome do you expect? And if you're going to be cooperating with the county, are they going to be working on their own annexation policy? At the same time, so that they're figuring out how this is going to be a collaborative process in the future if something comes from it.
Well, it needs to be a collaborative process, but it's the city's decision to annex or not. It's not the county, county can't force the city to annex somebody. So, so and not that they would, but I'm saying it's really, it really lies with. Us and the city council side. Why do we want annexation, annexation policy in the city to be for annexing to the city? Uh, but you're right. I mean, you know, I think, well, I think, I think you're partly right, Mary. There, there's some people in the public who have a strong no opinion about annexation. Obviously, some property owners might have a very strong yes opinion about it because they want to annex. And they're inside the city's urban services boundary. So, you know, we have to have a rules based approach to, to when you get to do that.
And I think, Mary, you know, perhaps at least some of the reason you may be hearing folks that are. Are not enthusiastic about annexation is not because of annexation, but because of their concern over. The current level of services the city provides and the cost of those services.
Oh, yeah.
So certainly, I think if you said we're going to annex, but that will have no impact. On services or cost to, to existing city residents. And it was one of the things we talked about last month. Was that, you know, an annexation, the extension of that, that infrastructure shouldn't. Cause a, you know, a financial burden on the existing residents within the city. It should be on those areas that are being annexed and. And I think that, you know, it, it may not be the only reason folks are opposed to annexation.
Oh, it's not. Uh, there, there's more reasons. So that's why I'm just saying, if you're going to have this public process. Then be prepared to have people tell you no. And uh, yes, you do need an annexation policy. So if somebody like. A realtor comes to you and says, okay, I want to annex this area into the city, but then, you know. Seventy-five percent of the people in that area saying no, then, but they follow a procedure. Uh, and everybody may not be happy, but there, the policy is in place. So I, I get that, but uh. Like I say, I think you need to ask those questions.
What, so let's start there. What, what other concerns do you think people have beyond costs?
They just don't want to be in the city. They don't want to have to deal with the city and the, the city government. Uh, that's one. Uh, they don't want to pay anything extra for infrastructure. That's two and three and four and five. And uh. I think, but the, but the main one is they don't want to be involved with you all. I, I'm, I don't know why I do not ask that question. It's just that they're very happy being outside of city limits.
I think that's true until it behooves. There's certainly become the personal interest in. What is the benefit that I'm getting out of this? And as we discussed last month, if the benefit is that. You have access to infrastructure, water and sewer, uh, potentially that could make a big difference. Especially if you were looking for some additional revenue or breaking your larger parcel up. Um, and so, I mean, we do need that policy in existence so that. When the situation comes, we've got something substantial that we can fall to. But, you know, just saying, oh, nobody's going to agree with it. We shouldn't deal with it, I think is a really poor.
Well, no, I think you have to deal with it, but there've been annexations into the city before, haven't there? Yeah, so there is a policy and I'm sure it's legal.
Yeah, I mean, it. We're trying to uh make it better and more clear because I think some of the. Objection to it is like we've seen in other issues is there's kind of a lack of information about what it really means. What, how is this going to affect me? And what does that mean? So you get, you can get. Overly enthusiastic one way or another, assuming that it's going to be this one thing. And if we can clarify that in the beginning and, and do a public interaction, I think you can, can really kind of limit a lot of that. Negativity that shows up, you know, spontaneously.
Yeah, I, 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 I was not here for the meetings, but I heard about them and I heard they were volatile. And uh, very kind of personal. Uh, to a lot of people and a lot of people showed up. So it is an issue that people think about. And I think they know exactly what's going on. Uh, but. You know, that's what you have to determine through a public participation process. So I'm, I'm just saying, don't be surprised. If people will say, hey, what the heck are you doing?
We're not surprised.
We're tired of you bringing this up.
This came up, Mary, when we looked at this most recent proposed annexation. And, you know, I think, you know, what we looked at was the surrounding landowners there. They weren't interested. You know, I don't think we're here to impose annexation.
I don't.
I think our goal is to say, if you want to pursue an, an annexation, here's how you go about it. Here's what the expectations and the requirements are. Uh, so it's providing a framework for annexation for those folks that may be outside the city now that. Feel like now they want to be within the city. Here's what it takes to do that.
Stop right there. I mean, you're, you're telling me that there is a policy already in place because people are, are following the policy. So. What are you actually trying to do?
I don't think there is a policy.
There's a state statute that dictates procedures.
Yeah.
And so there's procedures in place, but there's no, uh, nothing for the planning commissioner and the city council to turn to. To answer the questions that come up with annexation. Are we willing to take on? As um the ratepayers of the utility system, some cost of this extension of services. They don't know how to answer that question, what percentage of the cost. They, they don't have any guidance on that. Um, and so the lack of clarity that the staff can give to any party involved in the annexation. Will change as the discussion changes, so.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's what we have to dig into.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's. It's timely to sit down and lay out what that framework is if someone wants to pursue annexation.
Hmm.
I mean, that's all this is. Uh, that's all it will be. It's not a, a. A proposal to annex.
Any more money.
But it, but it, you know, what it does is if someone wants to come in, they know what they need to do. You know, do they, they need to get their neighbors to sign on. They need to understand the financial implications.
Hmm.
Um, you know, if they don't want to deal with the seat, you know, that's their choice. But as you talk about, folks up on Kanaka. Have a real water problem up there. You know, if an eye, if part of the answer to that is hooking up to the city water system.
Yeah, but that problem was created because the county let them build up there.
Problem's a problem now.
Yeah, and, and that, so the problem was created and now you're looking uh for an expensive solution.
We're, we're not looking for anything, Mary, except for a, a path by which people that want to apply to annex. Can be told yes or no. This, I, I wasn't at the volatile meeting, but I heard about it. Uh, and I think there were some people that misunderstood that, that in, in, that in some way, the city, whoever that might have been, city council or staff or somebody. Was interested in annexing people that weren't interested in being annexed, and that is not the case. The city is interested in having a process by which people who want to be annexed can get told yes or no with some kind of rulebook. That's behind that. And that's our job is to try to queue up policy for the city council to say, under these circumstances, the answer could be yes. You know, that's, that's.
Then you, you already have a state policy, right? You just said that.
Yeah. Qu- question to the chair, question to the chair and to uh. Staff, this is the county, this is Mike as a citizen. Because I'm hearing questions and I just, I, it sounds to me that I'm hearing a clarification that you are addressing a voluntary. Process to make this cleaner for your residents. Or the residents to wish that wish to annex, and it's not a mandatory process. Thank you for explaining that. This was unclear even to me as your city resident wondering what is going on. Um, now that that's clear to me, I'd just like to ask, because that is. You know, I think the county would be in support of having clear policies because lack of clear policy. Makes it confusing for everybody. Now, I'm speaking again as a resident, I don't know what direction I have from either my planning commission. Or the board of county commissioners, but in terms of how we manage the county. I would like to see this be again, like you are trying to provide some certainty. I think as a city resident, I'd like to see that certainty. Because like Commissioner Breckel has mentioned, there are people that have water issues that see this as a personal benefit. And one of the other planning commissioners mentions how it be, may become, uh, it is, it's a voluntary thing where this becomes a cost benefit. Or a choice that they then voluntarily make. This is not a mandatory annexation. So then I would say advance to the chair and to staff. And I don't know if this would work, and I cannot speak for my planning commission or my board of county commissioners. I have not been authorized. With this, but would it make sense to arrange a joint conversation? But with the acquiescence of my board, to have our planning commissions discuss this. Um, because I would think that their mutual goals would be as well, although I cannot speak for them. Their interest would be as well as to provide some clarity and certainty. And a policy that is easily understandable, or maybe, maybe we won't be able to write an easily understandable policy if the city, whatever, you know. We would have a defined policy. And I hear from resident Rapar that perhaps there is a policy already. And it sounds like there has been annexations in the past. I'm not familiar with the past or am I weighing in on that? But perhaps this is just a revisit or clarification of the policy, but I would advance to you, city. That if there would be some mutual conversations that would benefit this conversation moving the city forward. Um, I would recommend as a recommendation to. Reach out to us as a county and request that cooperation. Uh, I think it would benefit it, but is it something that I cannot set up without forward direction from above? If that works, that may be able to then to come to some, you know, mutual. I wouldn't say an understanding, or just, just to say, Mary, how do we make it clear? How does it work? Because the people that will be asking for annexation will not be in the city until the annexation occurs. They will be county residents. So. Uh, there it is. Is cooperation work? Is it easy to set up? And staff, can we arrange that upon request and with acquiescence? I think that there's a possibility there for twenty twenty-three. I do need to look for things. For our planning commission, we will be calendaring in January. And I'll turn it back over to you, but those are some concerns and comments as a citizen resident who also is the planning director. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I, I appreciate that. And I, you know, I would certainly be supportive of. Of having a joint meeting of the two planning commissions, if, if that's what we need to do to just, you know, talk about embarking on this. Effort to come up with an, an annexation policy, so that if someone comes into the county and talks about annexation or comes into the city. They're getting the same story.
Exactly, Chair. Exactly, Jeff.
And so, you know, uh, you know, you, you think the best course of action would be just to send. Just a brief letter to what the chair of the county planning commission and requesting that, that joint session, or does it go to you? Um, you know, what's the mechanics of getting the ball rolling?
You have to ask the commissioners.
Uh, this is the county at this point. Jeff, I, I don't know the policy that the city has. When you would direct your staff to get in touch with our county about how you would like to proceed. I'm assuming it is some type of general email perhaps to our planning commission, if you as the planning commission would like to speak to our planning commission. Uh, or it could be to the directly to the board of county commissioners. I would then turn that back over to you. It's your direction, how you want to proceed and what your staff would direct.
Okay. I just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, we're getting to the right folks. Uh, you know, within the county to be able to get this off on the, on the right foot, so.
Well, you know us, we're so small, I think any avenue will get the message out.
Okay, I appreciate that. Well, I think, you know, that in my mind is really, I think, probably one of the first steps we want to take. Uh, is to, is to talk, uh, you know, to the, to the county. Planning commission, it sounds like. And I think, uh, outline to them what we hope to achieve by coming up with uh an annexation. Policy framework and, and asking, uh, you know, for their participation or cooperation in that process. And I think also noting that we plan to do this with a rather. Uh, open and extensive public involvement process. That will reach out not just to the people in the city, but to those that are in the county and based into the city, so. I like that.
Yeah, we've done a, I, I got, we, we've done a really good public participation in the past. Uh, especially on the com plan and other things. to especially on the com plan and other things. So I don't think you'll have any trouble, but I'll sign up for the committee. Okay.
I think that's a good idea. I haven't, you know, letting the letting county planning commission know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a letter from you and the chair saying, hey, this is a topic that we put in our work plan for twenty twenty-three. We've got a goal of clarifying that policy is by halfway through the year. Um, and it ought to be a collaborative process with the county and maybe it not, not right away, but somewhere in that span of six months. Uh, there there's a moment of brightness where it would make a lot of sense for this commission and that commission to sit down together and say, okay, here's what we're thinking. Um, how how does that square with, you know, with the county is thinking? And and try to get to some reasonable consensus about that. And I, you just made a point, Jeff, very sound, which is the public involvement process for cities' annexation policy needs to include people that don't right now live in the city.
Yeah.
Because they're in the urban services boundary and their property might someday be annexed to the city. And they have a right to have a say about this. That that uh, you know, the city's going to want to listen to them as well as to the people that already live here. So I I think, I think you're on the right track with this.
And I think too, you know, whatever we can do with the county, whether it's on the staff to staff level to make sure as we're starting to forge or draft that policy framework. We're not going off the rails somewhere that that, you know, that the county's not going to be comfortable with as well, or to seek their input in terms of what they think we need to be. Uh, they're certainly more familiar with the development patterns or seeing around the city than than.
I won't, I won't try to speak for your Mr. Beck or for the county planning commission, but in my experience in general, counties like it when cities are clear about annexation. They appreciate it. They like it when we're clear.
Of course, Mike's looked at this from both sides, you know, both as his position on county planning, but as a former city planning commissioner.
Thanks. Yeah, it's a unique position, Jeff. I don't know if you can hear me right now, but yes, it's, I I am, uh, I am I would say I perhaps have been a unique position. Uh, but I could at least, and this is not me speaking for our planning commission, but I know that they are interested in looking for things to do on the calendar for twenty twenty-three that will deliver positive outcomes for our county residents. And we both know as a city and a county that yes, there is a one particular issue that has caused some uh, difficulty or some uncertainty with a certain, you know, potential future land action in close proximity to the city, that one of my county landowners uh, is attempting to address. So yes, uh, I would be, I would be without speaking for my planning commission, I would be fairly confident that they would be happy to, like you all have already said, yes, we like clarity. We like certainty. We like a clean ability that people can understand a defined policy. So I cannot see that they would be at any way disinclined to participate in this, to deliver a better product uh, to our county or a a mutually beneficial product to our county residents. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
So the, the reason that this all came up was because we were presented with the possibility of annexation, but didn't really have a clear framework on what are the things that we need to address when we're looking to approve it? And the danger would be that at one point it would, you know, these considerations would be made and then the next time, these considerations, so there's no continuity in framework. And so that's if Mary was still here, that would kind of address some of her issues, but also some of the questions that Mike had as to why we're looking at this is because as a planning commission, we felt that we didn't have enough definable framework to make a decision that was a checklist that we could go off and say, do you, do you meet this criteria? Do you, you know, have you filled this need beyond what the state said? Because it was really vague.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important for those folks that are considering annexation to know what it is they need to be doing, you know, rather than having them come in and say, well, I'd like to annex. And we say, well, okay, you're going to give us this information. And then, well, no, now we need some additional information. You know, the transaction cost goes up, the frustration goes up. And things don't go well and.
Well, I think it, I mean, it's it's something that's going to happen. And so planning for that ahead of time is always a better procedure than let's just wait until it happens. That's kind of, you're setting yourself up for some potential issues.
So it helps them and it helps us. It gives us a framework to make decisions, but it helps them to understand where it is they need to. Okay.
It helps the community understand what it is that's.
Yeah. Should I work on a letter with you?
Yeah.
I, I, I guess you could do that too, but.
So I've got joint meeting with the, between planning commissions or request for one.
Yep.
Uh, as part of our conscientious public involvement. And then I've got direct mailings uh, to adjacent property owners to get involved with that. Just gonna call it direct communications.
You've got in this document, you know, a a menu, if you will, of a lot of different uh, things that the city could do in terms of public information and public engagement on on this issue. Um, there's obviously a practical and financial limit to what the city's able to do. Uh, I guess I I tremble a little bit at the notion of trying to do a bunch of direct mailings on this. Uh, not because I don't want people to know, I'm not sure if that's cost effective. Certainly, we need to, people need to know this issue is in under discussion. They need to have an opportunity to have their say, whether it's online or meeting in this kind of situation today, but um, I guess tell tell us a little more about what you think. Maybe you don't know yet, but what what's a reasonable package and of public involvement strategies for this issue?
This is bringing some of the Blyker method in, um, that's uh informed consent process. So as we we go through and we uh try to suss out all the concerns and potential issues that people might have and who those people are. So there would be some direct communication, but people who are uh most concerned through the last annexation.
For people who've indicated that, okay. To the whole city residents, right?
Right. And we have done that in the past for things like a zoning change where a mailing is gone. Right. Um, but there there would be some more targeted direct outreach um, that will do what you're asking us to as part of your process or not.
Yeah, the people you've heard from on this issue one time or another in recent times. Okay, true. It's all since.
Yeah, you got, yeah, and maybe then I think you're obviously going to want to have some person listening sessions or an opportunity for folks to just submit comments, whether it's online or not. And perhaps as we go out, you know, going out with a bunch of questions that might pique their their interest, rather than just simply saying, hey, we're thinking about an annexation policy. What do you think?
Yeah.
Coming up with some of those key questions, you know, who should pay or, you know, how should that work or, you know? Or should this occur? I, you know, I I think we can come up with, you know, with some questions that sort of will help folks identify with the issue rather than just saying, hey, give us, hey, give us your thoughts on annexation policy. Um, always fine if I can prime the pump a little bit, I get a little bit, a little bit more of that.
Yeah, because it's easy to get to the polar opposites on which issue. Don't need any more growth, don't need more, any more people to say no to all annexations. Or it's my right as a property owner, you need to always say yes. Well, you know, we need, neither of those, neither of those poles is a good place to be.
Yeah, sort of grinding you in the middle is what.
So we need a place in the middle that says, under these conditions.
Yeah.
You know, you're in, you're in services boundary and you got these, you know, you meet these criteria. Then, you know, you you're you're on uh, on a path that could get to yes.
Yeah.
Uh, we need that, that's where we need to get to the definition that people are looking for. Instead of just this time, the answer is yes. It's typically going to be yes in this situation.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, it's we will, we will, I'm sure we'll hear many more strong opinions on this subject. It's a, it is a long issue.
Do you want to um undertake this through a subcommittee structure?
I I would say, I think this is a significant enough undertaking for the planning commission. Yeah, I I would like to see a subcommittee. Okay. Ben, I I'd volunteer. I'd look to someone else to volunteer too. And it's an important issue.
It was easy, everybody would be doing it.
The old saying fools rush in. What are you thinking, Ben?
Let's do that by motion officially created subcommittee with a chair. A motion to create a subcommittee with a chair. Anything else in the data? If if there's some specific direction you want to give to that subcommittee or some specific scope of authority or limitation of authority.
Well, I mean, can we put words in your mouth? I was like, sure, I I'd like to do that. And I think the subcommittee's job is to kind of vet the key questions that we need to grapple with as a commission and then that we need to pose to the public. Like you just said, it's not just, should we do annexation or not? That's not a helpful project.
Yeah.
It's, we have to get to a level of specificity that says, here's what we're thinking. Here are the big issues. Now, what do you think? And I guess it's kind of that, you know, when you see a proposition, that we have to get it to the that half-baked level work where, okay, we've got, we've got the issues on the table, got some possibilities. Now, what do you think?
Yeah. I think the potential chair has spoke that very clearly and and I. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just repeat what everyone said for Johanna, so she doesn't shoot me later. So um, there's a motion on the table to establish a annexation policy subcommittee chaired by Commissioner Hales. Uh, with the task of further defining the issue and recommending appropriate public engagement.
Works for me.
Good.
You're going to second that motion?
I'll second that motion. Somebody to do that.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, same side. Motion carries progress.
Okay.
I think, I think between that and your letter to the county that says, maybe we're taking this on. Yes, let's confer. I think that's a good path.
Good.
Good. I like it. You like it regardless.
You're happy with it.
So Mike, we will be in touch. Thank you for uh, your unofficial official.
Thank you, Commissioner Breckel. Uh, it seems that you gentlemen have it well in hand to figure out a policy to move forward for a positive process for county residents who would like uh, a clearer path to annexation. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thanks, Mike. We'll be in touch.
I can I jump ahead and just give one staff report that didn't make it to the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Um, broadband planning is something that we started undertaking in two thousand eighteen and then stalled out. Um, gee, have an opportunity to reinvigorate some of that um through the Department of Commerce and a contract that they have to uh, suss out and develop a specific broadband project that might qualify for funding later on. So that's where, some of where we stalled out uh, the last time is knowing what we want to do. Um, we got built the, yeah, we need it and we would use it, but what do we want? What does it mean? And this uh, contract fills the gap, so um I heard about that last month, a month and a half ago. Uh, contacted Commerce last month. A week later, they said, yeah, we'll get you on board with this. Do you want to work with community accounting to to include some areas there? Um, be working with Mike on that too, uh, under the community development department of the county, so. Hopefully we'll have some projects that will help us close uh, the internet speed gaps that we see in our communities and can go seek funding for this.
Yeah, I can, I I think I sat on that, that committee before, before I was even on the planning commission. You know, I I think one of the things we heard at the time was many of the providers were very anxious to provide enhanced service to the central business district, but weren't too enthusiastic about extending those services to the residents outside the district. And I hope the policy on this is if you, if you want the low-cost, high-revenue downtown service, you're going to have to eat the whole apple and provide service to the rest of us as well.
My understanding has evolved since though, so the the phrase business case doesn't make a business case to provide a service was always thrown out at those previous meetings. And that's by the um, internet service providers. Does it make a business case or not? We probably won't extend service if it's going to be a loser for us. Same same consideration you just had with annexation or some of the topics for annexation. And what I think that I've learned since then is that, well, that was baiting it out, that there is no business case for this. Therefore, this uh, extension qualifies for the state or federal money that's out there. Uh, and so that that's one of those gaps that's being bridged by this. So we know that there's not going to be a business case, otherwise it would already be there. Let's just outline the project and how much that is going to cost and get you applying for a grant fund to the services, so.
Yeah, keep us posted on that. I think that's, you know, this has become a critical public infrastructure at this point in time. It's much like sewer and water and electricity in terms of.
Especially in a way that we didn't anticipate in two thousand and eighteen. Two years later, who would have expected the need for internet access that we found ourselves at?
Yeah, exactly.
So that was in case Mike wanted to step out, but maybe he just misses being at these meetings.
It'll be a street real.
Yeah, they haven't got the new programming on yet, so. Might as well listen to us. Let me street realignment. This one was available for you at your uh, November meeting. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't get the visuals that had been off of the counter back in the meeting room to do the dot exercise. So.
So that was.
First, do all of that information still, so. Pump that back. So we held a public meeting um, to establish preferences if we'd be realigned Columbia Street. So we're going through that process to evaluate uh, whether that's a project that should move forward. It's a good idea at this point. We're doing a feasibility study to see if if it does move, how much is it going to cost? What sort of um, adjacent development is going to occur? Do those work out enough to justify making that that change or not? So as we look into what the built landscape adjacent to a realigned street looks like, we're engaging the public uh, to see what they'll like uh, for downtown students and urban environment. And we're doing this for Columbia Street, but also to facilitate future planning this commission discussions about uh, urban design, um, how how business, how buildings interact with the um, streets, so.
Ben, could you, could you, maybe just for my benefit? Ben, could you, could you maybe just for my benefit back up a little bit and that is i- i- is it safe to say that, that Columbia Street was targeted because of the combination of the physical alignment being off and a lot of potential redevelopment? So that's, when he looks at the situation, that's what I've heard, that, oh, that's why Columbia Street, combination of the jog and a lot of vacant or underdeveloped private. So that's, that's why we're here is because that's a problem slash opportunity. Uh, that's probably most, you know, most, uh, most obvious.
Yeah. Above that one level, in our downtown plan, um, it has, uh, some core principles to undertake for, for success. So those core principles involve, um, views toward the gorge, gorge, or in, uh, commercial corridors, uh, two-sided retail developments, five-minute walking loops.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and establishing that the plan identified, uh, catalyst projects. So here are some relatively easy projects to accomplish. Um, that would have a big change. Result in a big change, advancing these, um, high-level principles. So, yeah, a- and then the reason why that one's a catalyst project is exactly what you said. Here's a physical alignment that's dangerous, there's accident history that's there. Um, there's a possibility to move it over because there's underutilized property. And in moving it over, you create additional building space on that west side.
Mm-hmm.
Where it becomes a lot easier to create the two-sided careful wall, uh, retail corridor.
Right.
Looking down.
Good. And another, another basic question for you now, I'm sorry. I assume the property owners are very well aware that the discussion's underway because obviously they have to be at least willing to have this conversation. Because if they're not, and somebody comes into a building, I mean, we're done.
Yep, very well.
Okay.
So the, not to continue to delay you, but, uh, so the three options that are in there are those potentially the three options that the public comment would be looking at and deciding is this what we want in our downtown?
Yeah, uh, and really we, in talking with the consultant there, we saw four corners or opportunities to display how different development might work. And so there's, um, the undeveloped corridor, if it just moved with no, no buildings, uh, as one of those, there is basically what we think might be feasible under, uh, existing zoning where we are requiring the off-street parking. Uh, and so that limits it down to two stories, um, the way it engages the sidewalk is within zone tolerances. But that's, that lays out in that way. And then there's, um, the third one, i- if we, um, plan for larger buildings or allow if we plan for larger buildings, what would they look like? So in here, there's a mix of five fifty-foot tall buildings, which is currently allowed by our code. Um, there's a one-story less, four-story, there's a difference in how, um, the roof lines look and there's differences in the step backs or, uh, the building mass in relation to the street.
So that's my, my initial, uh, look at the, that, that option, I think, is that three?
Two, two is.
Yeah, is, is that it does, uh, you know, bring the issue of off-street parking up. Because, uh, I think that option three had, uh, parking areas on the south side. You know, and so as we kind of create that higher density concept for the downtown area going forward, parking's gonna become more and more of an issue, not less and less. And so I think that really has to be part of that conversation of, you know, how do we want our downtown to be and do we want to be able to have, you know, commercial businesses have access or people who are driving by and being able to park easily? Or is it gonna be something like, well, you gotta park five minutes down there and then walk back? You know, and, and how is that gonna potentially affect, you know, the commerce?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I, I was sort of attracted to the one, I think, that that August is talking about, the structures and the associated parking. The one, the one that is, I guess, I guess it's labeled as option two. Reminds me of a canyon almost, you know? Uh, it was one of the things we talked about too, I think, in, uh, when we were doing this, this thing plan, this, this, I know what, what they can, the current code will allow. But I think there was some real concern about structures that were more than, more than two stories in terms of what it does in terms of the gorge view and in terms of closing things in. Um, so I, you know, I'm looking for something, I think, that again provides that off-street parking opportunity, which was one of the concerns that they, they had.
Yeah, and some of this is just what they drew, right?
Yeah, it's just conceptual.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I, my reaction to this was, I, I don't think that that it's just, no matter what we say, I don't think that density is gonna be feasible here anytime soon.
Yeah.
Um, and then secondly, uh, uh, option three, just, we don't have to pick one, we're not gonna tonight, but I'm saying, you know, option three, that, that looks like about the right scale of, of building that probably will be practical. But I disagree with the idea that you need to have a curb cut, you know, right on Second Street in order to service the park. So that's a detail. I mean, you know, we don't need to get hung up on that stuff. But in other words, what they drew is useful, but it isn't determinative.
Right, well, I mean, it is in, in some degree because it has been stated to get to option.
Yeah.
Two, you have to kind of tweak our existing code.
Yeah.
And so acknowledging that, that option three, you know, is kind of the maximum potential of what we have currently.
Under the current.
As we did into public discussion and how they foresee the downtown of what they would like, you know, as a resident.
Yeah.
That that's, that's part of the thing that we have to be able to present is if we're gonna look at higher densities, this is what it's gonna mean. And it's gonna take away from what we've heard before is that we like our small-town feel. You know, and so we don't want Vancouver or Portland here, we don't want Foot River here.
Right, so I guess, you know, there's the, you're right, parking is an issue, but I'm not convinced that at a medium density like we see in the drawing for option two, that we would necessarily have to have as much parking as the code requires. So in other words, we may not need to increase the density as much as option two theorized, but we may not need to keep as much parking as we have today, particularly if it's, it's a scheme allows lots of on-street parking, which it does. It doesn't put a bunch of curb cuts in there, which then produce the on-street. So, so, you know, somebody who parks and drives and drives and parks in downtown Stevenson pretty often, you know, I, I think we've, we've got a little wiggle room on that issue. We don't necessarily have to stay with our current parking standard, even if we allow a little bit more than.
Well, I think the other thing in, in that parking discussion, I think we've kind of touched on that is, is angled parking. Right, and, you know, there's certainly both, both sides of the fence. There's the people that are confused by it and, and don't like it, right? And then there's the, the people that have experienced it and seen the benefits to it. And so it's really kind of a, a discussion and you know, again, the more informed people are, the better they can make a decision about it.
And I think that parking on, on Second Street, we have uh, not an ideal or an optimal situation. It's a narrow thoroughfare. You know, you see truck traffic going through there and how many people open their car doors in front of someone coming through. You know, compared to, uh, where State Route fourteen runs through downtown Binge, much, much broader right of way. You don't have that, that confined feeling. You don't have that situation of opening that car door or, gosh, as I was coming down the other day, there was a fairly wide truck. He wasn't making any pretext of staying in his lane, he was taking a portion of the oncoming lane. Um, it's, it's a narrow right-of-way through here, you know, and it's, and it's an artifact really of yeah, historic artifact, I guess, in terms of how it was, it was planned. But in some ways, I think that suggests that you, you need to be thinking about what you can do for off-street parking. Not just for new businesses, but how do you, how do you make it safer to park?
Well, essentially as we're looking at realigning that, you know, if you were gonna consider angled parking, that changes the dimension of that roadway versus, I'm not talking about existing roads and, and the limited space where, as we're talking about something new.
Yeah, condi itself versus.
Right, and, and, I mean, potentially we have another alignment that would be similar so that if we had kind of an, an ideal or a concept of what we wanted would make that discussion easier later.
Mm-hmm. And Mike, do you have your hand up? Was there something you wanted to throw in here? I know you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner Breckel. Just a quick comment as a city resident who lives in the downtown core, I'm sorry, I was eating while you guys were discussing. We like closure on the streets because it slows cars down. We don't know how much the city can do with the street until the city takes control from Wash Dot, but we, I hear from people, they slow down when the buildings close in a bit, but Ben mentioned closure. Whatever density you do, closure is good because it'll slow people down. And as a downtown walking resident who lives and walks in the downtown core every day, well, I like awnings. You know, I don't know what you're planning on Columbia Street. Again, this is me as your city resident, not a county director. Would, I don't know what you're doing on Columbia Street, don't know whatever density is appropriate, but in general, as a downtown resident, a little bit of closure, a little bit of street awnings are very nice. And seeing those types of design features, however you decide to execute them to us, would give us a nice place to walk out of the rain and a little bit of slower traffic. So thank you and thanks for the discussion. It sounds like you're in a great dis- uh, direction with whatever you do with Columbia. Thank you. Turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Mike.
It is a great opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Especially again, if the property owners are willing to consider, you know, some, some, some significant changes here about where the street is and where the developable land is. That's potentially important to them, very important to them. Uh, but, but yeah, it's, it's a unique situation. I, I don't know that, even, does anybody know the history that we ended up with this jog in the first place?
So in alignment is the original alignment.
Yeah.
Um, it was the northern one that's a portion of the vacation. Obtained the right-of-way above, uh, and I believe that that right-of-way vacation was requested by the property on the Second Street. Interesting corner, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, or some, I don't, I, I think that it was for, to accommodate existing development that has happened to be put on the right-of-way. Yeah. We'll do the show.
So that's the next step.
It was, you want to, you know, as, as individuals more than as a planning commission making a recommendation, do you? I, I've made notes on general thoughts for, uh, bu- building massing, ideal development scenario. Do you want to provide any feedback as individuals for, uh, the types of awnings, the presence of awnings? Uh, types of street trees, types of, uh, street furniture?
Well, yeah, I guess I have a few thoughts about it. One is, you know, I appreciated the, the detail here, but I, there, there may be it may be putting too many eggs in the basket of two blocks. Um, in other words, a street tree regimen downtown, good idea. We've got part of it. Over time, maybe we can make sure we have more. Um, and what the shape and spacing of those trees are is, is something good to consider and look at the options, but, but I wouldn't load that all up on two blocks of Columbia Street. Uh, or a couple, a couple more blocks a second to go on with. In other words, you know, what we do in terms of street trees, to me, should be more about a, a relatively coherent plan for the whole downtown. And then same thing about awnings. Awnings are good, especially on a rainy day. Um, and they're also good if you want to have like a little bit of outside dining and it's hot and sunny. So on the south, on the north side of the street where you're getting the sun. So, you know, those are, those are a good thing. But again, I'm not sure how much I would, even though the, the, the team produced some good images and ideas here, I'm not sure how much I would try to load up on, on this project. I think the, the tougher issues and more maybe the more significant issues to my eye for this project are what does happen with density in order to make this happen? If you have to do something, we have to at least consider some changes in density and regulations in order for this to be feasible. What's our, what's our bandwidth on that? You know, how much more density, how much less parking? Could we make angle parking more? August and I have a great idea to think about that. I mean, I think some of those details will turn out to be pretty important as to whether not only people to say, well, well, that's good, that's a nice change. Those are, those are good additions to Stevenson. And whether or not the people involved are willing to actually make the investments to make it happen. That's a tough sweet spot to find.
And I, you know, on the street trees, you know, cities had a street tree program since the late seventies, early eighties. And you're doing some work on it now in terms of inventories and, and looking at what we can do. So I think trying to continue that being is, I would agree with Charlie on that. You know, and I think as you're looking at at how you utilize this space, I, I think real seriously about, do I want sort of curbside planters in there? Because, you know, you could probably do street trees as we have, you know, in our existing streets. But those planters are gonna take more space, are gonna set that structure back further. It's gonna mean you have less developable land.
Right.
You know, it's not that they are, you know, attractive, you know, or the, the corner planters, those are, you know, th- those are fine. But the street tree may be an acceptable amenity. It works better in terms of getting better utilization or making it more feasible to utilize the land on either side. I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's just, you know, that's something I think that ought to be considered as you look at it in terms of how do you use that, that space. And I think one of the interesting things too that, that I saw, you know, particularly looking at some of the older east coast cities, it was curb sidewalk and then a planter to the building rather than a, a curb, a planter and then a sidewalk. The rest in, in DC, that's what I used to see pretty frequently. So I mean, there's ways to, I think spatially you can start.
Is the discussion that Columbia would be a two-way street or is a one-way a consideration?
This is, this scenario is. One presented. Um, and I don't think that there's been a conscious decision to exclude one ways, but it has not been evaluated.
What, what's the next step in this process, aside from whatever we think or whatever guidance formally or informally we might give you tonight? What, what's the next, what, what happened? What's the path look like to this idea?
Uh, the last page there is a slide showing where we've taken samples, either through previous, uh, effort on one of the sites, soil samples.
Right.
The results from those are still, um, being worked out and that will determine, um, whether a remediation plan is necessary for any areas. If we're in either the area where we would shift the right-of-way to, if we're gonna need to remediate the soils there or remove any contamination that's in the place. Uh, if anything can be counted. And whether, um, the areas that we would relinquish for. And whether um the areas that we would relinquish for development, whether remediation of the soils would need to happen. And so we'll have some idea of the scope of that, some idea of what the cost of that. The cost of removing or moving infrastructure.
Okay, but are you, are you, all right, you're gonna get this remediation, you're gonna get this environmental information. But then, or is the city seeking a grant? To pay for?
Yeah.
Because it's not going to be an expensive proposition.
Absolutely.
Uh, so and and uh. It it would, I guess it would be useful to see. A path like. Remediation results, you know, cost estimate. Um, negotiation with property owners about right away because you're going to have to be. Acquiring right away from one set of property owners and. Dequeathing. Uh, or selling right away, former right away to another. Um, that's no, I mean, the, you know, frankly, the the, I don't mean to sound. Snarky about this, but the default. For something this like this is it doesn't happen. Because something trips us up, either the the environmental trips us up or a property owner says, no, I'm not interested in doing that.
Well, I think those two were pretty closely tied together in my mind.
Right.
And I guess they have. As a property owner, they have certain obligations. For remediation. And. If changing this requires them to.
Yeah.
Be a responsible party in that remediation, they may say no. So I think. You know, your first big test is. What is it going to take? To. Make this happen environmentally, right? What what's the remediation? Because unless you can answer that question and have have an answer to that is yes. Uh, how does it go forward? The, this effort is um underway to anticipate what those costs are, so. Including acquisition and and the next steps there.
Public work construction and.
Yeah, before the city can. Before the staff certainly can um. Feel good about making a recommendation uh to move forward. We want to provide information for what that return on investment would be. And so that's where we're going into, where we're diving into some of that's um. Massing is what's the means tolerance for development of that corridor. Which would determine the return on investment. Or the likely tax that could be generated. Out of all of that, so. Um, yeah. Sort of the conceptual design of what you're doing there, yeah.
Yeah, this. This seems like, I mean, uh, one, I I think it's an interesting and. It's a good opportunity. You know, I I'm enthusiastic about it, but I also think there are a lot of. A lot of obstacles that we just talked about, and it also seems to me. Kind of an iterative one where we ought to revisit this as you progress. Um, and there's no, no need to make these massing. Decisions now. Um, I mean, they 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 will perhaps ultimately matter, but there are these threshold questions of what's the remediation scenario? What's it going to cost to acquire the property, build the street? Um, you know. Uh, and how much of that is potentially grant funded? Um, versus something that the property owners are going to perhaps be willing to pay part of because of their increased development opportunity. You know, that's a, that's a package. And as that package evolves, as you're working on this and others in the city are working on this, I think it would be good to come back with us and. Grapple with some of those details some more, um. But we don't get to the details if the deal can't be done. But I think, but I do, I do think this kind of visioning in terms of what could be done, you know. When it comes right down to public acceptance and saying, what it's going to cost us this to do this. I think we want to be able to say, yeah, you know, here's the opportunities it provides and this is, this is what it could, what it could look like, so. They have that context, but. There's no guarantee either on that stuff, so I think that's important. I don't tell a lot of Portland stories, but in the Portland Zoo. Years ago, there was a little public art project and when they remodeled the zoo, it went away. I always wish I could have gotten this. It was a little bronze plaque that was. Inserted into one of the retaining walls around one of the pens and it said, on this spot in eighteen seventy eight, nothing happened. And that's, that's true of a lot of spots, right? You know, I mean, the. The T fall, complicated, things like this is always, well, it was a good idea, but. This tripped us up, the remediation tripped us up, or the state tripped us up, or. You know, this property owner said, to help you guys, I'm not going to do that. You know, I mean, there's. I I get, I'm not trying to be a doomsayer here. I I think this is a cool idea and it would be great if we could make it happen. But I think. We don't need to get tied up in knots about the design details yet. My opinion.
Do you see what I'm saying about? The building massing.
Yeah.
Will help determine the return on.
Absolutely, okay, absolutely, and that's why ultimately we got to get to. Cases about that, like. What what is publicly acceptable, what do we think is reasonable?
Yeah, so both of those.
Does that require changing the code?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we we got to get to that, but I my my counsel is we don't have to get to that yet.
Both will be part of the deliverables from Moll Foster on beyond on this project.
Yeah, so.
And then. I hear you about repeat.
Yeah, I think, I think we go when we originally started talking about that realignment. I think we were hoping that. We weren't going to run into these remediation requirements. But you know, on that, on that one. Well, I guess it'd be the southeast corner, there was a gas station, it's a Texaco station and a garage and. And of course, then you have the gas station on the, on the northwest corner too. So, you know. Gas stations are gas stations and they've all just been around for, right? For years, I mean.
My, my general approach is I'm agnostic to where money comes from. Money is available to solve problems, so if it, if it does turn out the remediation is necessary, that opens one door for funding to bring toward the project. If that's not a door that can be opened, we've got transportation. Uh, funding that can be put toward this, we've got other funding sources, so. It won't. As much as possible will not be coming from local sources, it will be outside grants, you've got to find which doors are open or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even in that case, you still have to, you start to show the value there too, that's, I think that's the. Crucial.
Oh, really, I'm, I'm really glad that. City's looking at this. You don't try to try these things, if you don't try to make it work, then. Well, I I, you know, I think in part of the downtown, I mean, look at what the city did on Russell Street. Right. What they're doing, what they're going to try and do here on. On Columbia, what they've done on on first. Um. You know, the city can only do so much to breathe that sort of life and economic activity and public interest in the downtown. But these are important, I think, keystones to that.
Yeah.
No, it isn't going on success, I think like a really good lighting program this year. Yeah. You know, the city's really doing some. Some good, maybe some good long term moves, so this could be one more. Yeah. You've got to build that sort of. Public movement, you've got, you know, within the. Community, within the business. Neighborhood and. You know, it was the same with the sort of. Period streetlights that we, yeah, some of those were donated. It's another great success. That's a good one, Ben, it's gonna be, because it's gonna be fun for for us and for the community to. Think about what could happen here and and is a a version of the future that people want.
Yeah, I think the city's done a good job of sort of embracing that downtown.
It's a lot of, we've spent a lot of time on it, but no, you guys have done a great, a bunch of really great stuff here. But what do we have, Ben? Does you need anything more for us on this or?
I don't. But I will take anything that you have.
Yeah, well, they do come back for us with this as a, as a, as a, the next. Kind of turning the road certain. So are we to? Staff and commission reports?
Staff and commission reports, so um I noted the broadband as an addition, downtown parking is something that we're looking at. Um, as I mentioned before, the the Liker Institute training that's um. We talked about as a joint planning commission city council group, staff has now gone through the. Uh, initial training work for that. And are using some of these parking decisions. Uh. As a, as a further training ground for us, and so. Bringing forward specific subcommittee topics to the uh to Anne as the planning commission. Chair of that subcommittee just hasn't evolved yet because that's second worst, okay, how are we doing this? Um, before uh bringing in. Others, so we want to uh implement things well. Um, and take the blame for not doing it before Anne absorbs that blame or you do, so. Uh, looking at that. The overall program that we're looking at for that. Is the reduction in onsite space requirements, which we considered and made some reductions. Uh, in twenty twenty one, we could would consider further reducing that if necessary. The other two prongs are. Uh, allowing for a fee in lieu of onsite parking, so you need to provide a certain number of spaces. If you don't want to do that or don't want to sacrifice the space on your territory, you can pay into this fund for the city to increase um the parking supply. If or increase uh and improve the parking supply, we don't know what the actual balance on the expenditure of those funds would be quite yet. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is really an interaction between um the planning zoning code side that we already talked about and the public work side. Or really um. Police side of on street parking, where we have an overnight prohibition for on street parking on our downtown core right now. If we are. Creating places for people to live but not requiring parking. We need to have. Certain, we need, they need to build your park on the street, so we're evaluating how to change those prohibitions, uh relax that a little bit. And. That'll be forward as the third prong we're currently playing at.
Instead of set up anything, Ben, I, because I know that John Mobley came back down at one point in time and was saying, gosh. I wish you'd put in uh. Parking time limitations. On on second street because he felt people were parking there all day long and. It wasn't available for folks that were were coming to shop. And. Seems to me, now you, you set up a situation, if you've got downtown residents and they're. Parking on the street and you've got merchants that want those spots to open up. You know, how do we, how do we deal with that? I mean. I I mean, it's. It's not an unsolvable problem, but it's it's one that you need to be thinking about.
It's not one we're proactively trying to solve with this effort. But it's not one that we haven't thought. That might be an issue, it's just not one we're trying to solve currently. Um, we are looking at um. On street ADA options. And coordinating that with um. Site distance at corners, so. Having the corners open for ADA. Or reserved for ADA spaces and since. They're. They are less likely to be filled, that provides more visibility for more often. We're not. That's another limitation, that's creates more competition for those other spaces.
Yeah, well, Russell Second already. Has an existing. Vision impairment. Yeah, yeah.
You know, the whole parking issue is 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 a difficult one. You know, in terms of, you know, do you take up? Good. Space that you could be using for. Downtown. Commercial development or combination commercial residential development. And put a parking lot. You know, I. You know, it's. Well, there's a, there's a. There's a staircase of. Options. That we haven't really even started to go up yet, but. Power limitations. That's one. Yeah. You know, I mean. There's ways to manage the scarce resource of parking. As there's more. Demand. Um, whether it's from res, people that are starting to live. Where we didn't have any people living before. Or. More commercial activity because there's more stores. Um, there's. There's options. You're ready to be looking at it.
Yeah, and it's something that, again, you know, looking at it before you get to the situation where you're like, okay, we're in. Almost crisis mode.
Yeah, and our options are fewer at that point.
Right, and and that's, that's always like the danger to to get to that point, you kind of like kick that can to the point of hands crossed. So, yeah, as long as we're. Keeping that conversation.
Well, and this payment in lieu. You know, is an interesting concept, but.
But what I was thinking.
Is there raised enough capital and if it does?
Where's the blue, what are you doing?
Yeah, well, here's the parking. So in other words, if it's going to be an option, you have to think about.
Exactly.
The the full life cycle, I guess, of that, of that proposal.
Yes.
And it was an easy problem, it would have been solved a long time ago, Ben.
We are working on that as one of the city council priorities, one of the priorities that you guys established too, so. Making progress on that, we're walking before we run. At the staff level. Uh. The septic to sewer program I've also mentioned here in the past, that's something that we've got a good um. Basis of resources. From the city of Vancouver and what they do for septic to sewer, and so we'll be asking the city council for um. Real direction on whether they want to go that way, um. The. Program. Would create a fund that they can be uh doled out to property owners for the connection costs. Um, the limitation of use of that funds is. If you are um not poor and firm. Uh, then it would need to be by Washington State Constitution, a loan program. And so does the city council want us to to? Ramp up to the point where where we're giving loans? Uh, and is the staff ready to ramp up to that, that point? Um, if you are poor and firm, it can be a grants. The number of septic systems. That would be replaced by the poor and firm is is less because you need to be a property owner and have some resource. In order to request. Connection to sewer instead of your septic system, so. We'll get that direction from city council before you capitalize it. Uh, the initial um. Was a um. In kind mitigation. Of ten thousand dollars for a stormwater. Quality impact that the city had as part of our Rock Creek Drive project. So, um, and so the, I think that it was nymphs. Allowed us to capitalize our own fund with that. But it would be available to other people that are having water quality impacts uh that. Need some in kind mitigation, offsite mitigation. City Vancouver. Capitalized theirs by charging. Residents within the service area that weren't connected. And so it essentially turned it into a saving account. Mandatory savings account, they discontinued that charge. And so I, at the staff level, we're thinking um. Recommending against city council, going down that path where we begin charging. People who are not connected to the sewer system.
Charging them for sewer that are not yet received or a service or an agency. Do they run into legal issues with that?
Uh, I didn't explore, I didn't explore that, I was, we assumed that it was political issues, but it very well could be legal. Characteristic. Yeah, um. But the the program. Adoption and the program documents are in place if we want. If the city council wants. That adopted, so. Um, shoreline access, uh you all adopted the uh public. Uh, involvement plan at the last meeting and you've been working with the consultants on that to. To get us for those next steps, so we'll be doing some direct outreach um to impacted. Uh. Parties uh this month. And hoping to schedule a um. Our first public workshop at the start of next year, so that one's on.
That was a pretty good plan.
Yeah.
It really was.
They've been good consultants to work with um so far, they've been doing a lot as, as far as just, you know, client interaction. Going forward, they've been doing a lot of the backgrounds um data collection so far and they haven't presented any of that return yet. Or their analysis yet to, to the city, but looking forward to that, I think, third week of this.
A question came up at our meeting last month was. To what extent are you engaged with the port in terms of?
Yeah, they'll be one of those parties that's definitely um involved. One of the good things for them, the scope of the access plan will give us a set of tools and that will be. Make it easier for projects to obtain approval, shoreline projects to obtain approval, and a list of projects um that we can budget for. As in more of a, a parks planning sense. Um, with the port, they've done such an amazing job of providing public access.
Right.
That's. The tools are almost unnecessary for them because they're, they're already in place. It's engaging with them to see what their uh capital improvements they need, or they want to see for continuing their public access.
What means?
Um.
For public facilities, that's seems to be what oftentimes is underfunded when. We, we pay for those, those public facilities that are planted, and the maintenance of those facilities. Seems to be. Difficult to find money for. So that would be my question.
Open that up with the consultants too, so we are looking for that toolbox. And how to have a discussion about adding tools for maintenance.
I assume the court under its, its permits has certain needs requirements. Already. It doesn't.
Mm-hmm, none, none that I can recall that the city issued for.
Of the shoreline?
Shoreline, public access.
They have to get a court permit?
On their most recent one, they did have to get a court permit. I don't know that anybody's looking for that long-term maintenance. How to deal with that?
Yeah.
I'll just focus on you.
Mike, is your hand up again, or are you just perpetually having your hand up?
I would like to apologize, Commissioner, I've been working on other things involving the county with emails while I've been listening to your discussion. So my apologies, no, no hand raised, but I appreciate listening to your discussion about all these matters before the city.
I just didn't want to overlook you, Mike.
It was a mistake, my bad, long days.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Your hand's up again. Oh, I put it down for you.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. I don't know what these buttons mean.
Okay, Ben, what else we got?
Uh, the last page of the packet, we um had a successful round of Transportation Improvement Board um funding requests. Um, all of these were led by the new uh Public Works Director. And so Sydney Stevenson has been awarded um funding for loop here. So Columbia uh going up. We did the middle associated with the waterline project, we did the middle uphill lane five years ago, associated with the waterline project. We do a portion of the middle um downhill lane associated with sewer project, this would completely. Um, and do other repairs or, or bring it up to what it was before. Um. And then uh overlay for Willard. McAvoy, laying overlay.
What, you mean they're going to do my street?
You contact her specifically.
We, we had that conversation, you know, it's the last. One hundred feet of the, of the road is dirt.
I don't know what's in this, for that seventy-four thousand.
I think it's, I think it's to the west, but I might be able to get it out of gravel.
Uh, and then um. Seal color chip seal, uh multiple locations around town. We like to leverage and make the best use of that funding by contracting with Skene County uh for their crew and their uh. Equipment, resources for the, the chip seal, some, some of the overlays, we were able to do that with uh. Uh, project on the cemetery road that uh Android up her way. So, um. Those are some changes that'll be coming either next year or following construction seasons.
That's great, because you know, working with funding sources is not an easy task, and we did a nice job. And they're out there, but. You're going after them, you, you got to know that process, you got to do those, so that's great. Anything else before us?
Uh, the two links there and thoughts of the month, uh Stiger Wall Project is the large wetland complex uh at the. Uh, west end of the gorge where there's been a lot of construction, so this provides the story map for that. If you didn't know what was going on there, you can make yourself aware, um. And it's good to have visuals like that, and then eBay Perspectives was the other link, so.
The Stiger Wall Process project has been going on. Well, I think we've been trying to get that going for probably twenty-five years.
Wow.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, I, I actually want to go look at the, because that's. National Project, I've been seeing it in passing.
That's, it's very well done, yeah, it's, it's really great, it's really great. But that property was acquired back when we were doing the gorge legislation.
Yeah.
And. It was, it was controversial.
So, pre-project, it had a levee system all along the Columbia.
Yeah.
And um they broke that, they moved the levee system to protect just the development, restored um natural processes there. And that provides a. Floodable space protecting development further downstream.
And a whole lot of habitat in the bargain, right?
Oh, yeah.
Quite, quite well, and that, that big rainstorm we had.
Yeah.
Well, some of the equipment got abandoned. And it hadn't quite expected it to come up that high. Just like the uh. Didn't realize that Rock Creek would get as high as it did.
Yeah.
Caused some issues there.
I know, it's a. It's a great project. It wasn't cheap in terms of time and effort, but. Surprised to see. The photo of the lamprey on the sign, is it prime lamprey habitat?
You know, if you have that sort of muddy bottom, because the antiseeds will stay in the mud. You know, basically in the tube for, you know, close to three to five years before they emerge. So they're looking at something other than a gravel bottom, they don't want a gravel bottom.
You would know.
Okay, I was working on a letter to the city council for snowplow policy, uh a letter to. Um, in coordination with Jeff, a letter to the Skene County, um. How is that being about?
Yeah, it's like maybe the chair of the planning commission, we would just copy Mike certainly. And uh we could even copy the board of county commissioners too.
And I'll follow up with you, but it seems like we have to maybe key the activation of our subcommittee to what we hear back from the county.
Yeah.
But that joint process, to the extent that it is a joint process, might look different, but uh, but I'll, I'll follow up with you, Ben. But you're the one of us that forced behind the cart? Yeah, what a. Get ahead of ourselves, trip.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
Okay, second, second, all in favor, we stand adjourned.
All right.
Thank you all.